So how did your car show go?
Really good.
I know you didn't get rained on yet.
Yeah, we are ready to roll.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah, we're ready to roll.
Perfect.
Bring the meeting to order, please. Public information notices as required under Notice by law 144-2007. The public is advised of council's intention to adopt the following at its August 9th, 2022 meeting. Approve a budget amendment in the amount of $100,000 in the insurance deductible reserves to cover the deductible for flood damage claims. Blessing and land acknowledgement, Councilor Smith, please. All right.
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Madi people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Kenora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we try always to unite the citizens of Kenora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Councilor Smith. Call now for a declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof on today's agenda or from a meeting which a member was not in attendance. And none declared. Ask for confirmation of previous committee minutes.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Resolution Number One, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor McMillan, that the minutes from the last regular committee of the whole meeting held on July 12, 2022, and the special committee of the whole meeting, July 12th and 19th, 2022, be confirmed as written and filed.
Dan Feer. Next, we have a deputation from Kathy Billick protesting the proposed zoning bylaw. I'd like to remind you that this is not a bylaw yet. You're here regarding the draft official plan.
That's right.
It's just a draft only. I remind you that the official plan is still in the consultation phase, and at this point in time, we're not considering the final draft. So, public comments should be directed through the consultation process, which is to email all comments to planning@kenora.ca, and we're ready for your presentation.
So what you're saying, that whatever I'm saying today is not salient because it hasn't even got to bylaw, like, is there a...
It hasn't come close to bylaw yet, no.
So is this a preemptive kind of, is it?
I would suggest it is, but I think we're willing to hear your points.
Okay.
So this is not a bylaw. City Council has not discussed this yet. It's part of the official plan. We haven't, it's still with the government of Ontario. And we're still waiting.
I understand that. And I understand that it's a five-step process, and you have already sent it to, so there...
So administration has forwarded, council has not seen anything beyond the draft that has gone to the ministry, and that's typically the process?
So who initiated the change? Like, was that generated by here?
It's a requirement that we update our official plan zoning bylaw every five years.
Okay.
So, or it was at the time, so that's changed since then. But it's every five years, so we're in the process of going through that requirement. And there are components and steps that have to take place before it comes to council table. So there's already been rounds of public consultation. We gather that information, then we send it off to the ministry. The ministry has to give us their approval in order for us to go bring it back.
Okay.
And go to a further community consultation. So we are still receiving public comments through planning@kenora.ca, and those will be formed part of the consideration of the official plan. So council hasn't seen it. It's only been, it's only in draft.
So when you're saying, "public consultation," are you talking about the residents of Black Sturgeon?
Yes. All residents have had an opportunity to provide feedback.
And they haven't?
We've received lots of feedback from the public.
Have you?
Yes.
So I am not aware of any of that.
We are aware of the five-step process. We know where it's at. We know it's at the ministry. We know it's just a proposal, and we want to get this on record, that there's a whole lot of residents on Black Sturgeon Lake who were not aware of the proposal at the ministry, and we want to get it on record, how we feel about it. We do not want the restricted zones removed. We know they're not done. We know you haven't voted on them, and we know this is another step in public consultation. Clearly, we missed the first public consultation, so now we're here to have our say.
And that's all good.
Yes, we understand all of this.
Yeah, for sure. The only other thing that I would add is also, we have a third-party consultant that's typically engaged on this, and so we have conversations around goals that the city is looking for. You know, and then in concert with the consultant, you know, proposals come forward. So that's just another important detail.
Okay.
We have that third-party expertise to help guide the process as well.
So I'm Kathy Billick. I live at 602 James Road. I've been here for 33 years. Still not a local, but I have been here. And I guess what, and so I do have history going back to 2007, about the changes in the bylaws on Black Sturgeon Lake. And so I guess the concern was, and I'm sorry, I'm just talking personally, is that although we've had in the past, many years ago, large consultations, things happen very quickly that we could not stop, so I guess, or have input on. So I guess I'm just saying, do you want to hear our points about, and I'm sure that you're aware of the issues that we are concerned about, right? I mean, it's what, it's what, the protection of all the waterways, all of those. It's not just Black Sturgeon, right?
Sure. We were just seeking clarity with the process, so we're absolutely here to hear what happens.
I just don't want to, like, I'm, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. We're here to listen.
Okay, so I'm gonna skip a whole bunch of stuff here today. I'll skip that part. Okay, so we're here to formally, and I represent, I have at least 120 names right now, and growing. We are here today to formally declare a public record, on public record, there were opposed the proposed zoning bylaw revisions detailed for Black Sturgeon that were written by the city of Kenora in February 2021. Stop me whenever I'm not making sense and I go into speaking in tongues. And have forwarded to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs for approval. We understand, as I stated earlier, that this is a five-step process. You're already in the third step, and there, after five, there's no room for us to appeal. There was an opportunity for the public input before it reached the provincial level. Unfortunately, the majority of us were unaware of the proposal and its impact on Black Sturgeon Lake. Fortunately, we were alerted by Richard Cohn, a Black Sturgeon resident, who said that it was in a short notice included in our bi-annual tax bill. A lot of the people on our lake, and me included, myself included, we're not on social media. We're not, you know, we're not getting this information, right? There's not necessarily the transparency of what's occurring. What are we opposed to? The main revision, and that's this one here, and you can see the restricted zones in red there, is removing the restricted zones for developing on the black, on the lake lot. It also includes a revision to the required lakefront frontage for building from 122 meters, which is what is in place, to 61 meters, thus doubling the housing density. This is an immediate trigger regarding the consequences of septic fields population blocking and the impact on the water quality of the lake, which is what we consume. Could you skip to slide number five, please? Thank you. As the water quality reports there.
One more?
And, yes, this is slide five. So in 2007, there, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, it was a comprehensive environmental report called the Black Sturgeon Lake Capacity and Management Report that was written by Kelly Saunders. This report was based on her extensive research on Black Sturgeon. She is, she specializes in environmental impact assessment and environmental resource management. You can read all about her credentials on Lake of the Woods Water Sustainability Foundation website. I'm sure you know her well. Her report was accepted as the standard for Black Sturgeon Lake development. In her report, she only articulate, she not only articulates water quality issues, but the environmental issues inherent in future development on Black Sturgeon. The recommendation in the report includes larger frontages for new lots, limited number of new lots, and consistent water quality. Now, having said that, we know that what also came out, that there would be room for, was it 142 new lots to be developed on Black Sturgeon, that the water quality would be sustainable, and 79 have been already developed, so leaves in, what, 65, 63? I have that number in here, but I appear to have gone blind. Anyway, so, the water quality in lower and upper Black Sturgeon is, was studied in 209. You could, we'll skip eight and nine. We don't need eight and nine. Oh, see, this is, this is your zoning file. D, lot sizes, 122. So the water quality in lower and upper Black Sturgeon was studied in 209 and 210. It provided a baseline for future comparisons. In 2015, it was determined annual reporting would be better done, to keep track of what was going on. If you do number 10, please.
They're not numbered, so you just have to, one more?
No, the next one? Next one? Okay. Here you can see, this map demonstrates the four areas that the water quality is tested. Please note that site two and three are in the mouths of Black Sturgeon River, which is a restricted development zone on both sides of the river. If we could, yeah. Huh?
Stay, stay on it, as I was saying? No, it's okay to go to, all right, am I going too fast for you, Susan?
No, it was just, only half the map was showed on that slide, I don't know why.
This is the chart from the 2020 water quality report, and it clearly shows the phosphorus levels are near or above the provincial water quality objective. If you go to slide 12, note the highlighted area on the final page of this report where it says the phosphorus concentrates found at sites three and sites two and 220, where the highest found since sampling began. So this report should be the main reason why we don't want to see the restricted zones and the zoning changed. Again, this is our formal objection to the proposed revisions. There is no reason for the changes to occur based on the environmental impact reports. Nothing has been done to mitigate the impact of water quality on the community which we drink. I'm sure you're very familiar with the Environmental Protection Act. Section four, for the purpose of this act, a danger to existing water supplies or use for human consumption shall be deemed to be a danger to the health and safety of persons. So that is, in a nutshell, why we're concerned about dropping the restrictions, making the, going from 122 to 61, and we still have lots available on Black Sturgeon and another 65 that can be developed. So that is our concern, and just wanted to get that on the record today.
Okay. Thanks for your presentation, and I understand that this council won't see any of this. It'll be going, this, this will be coming to the next council after much further public consultation.
So what is our step, then? What should we do?
Your step is to go to the public consultation, I believe, and get as many people to make comments at that point.
Just wondering, reiterating what Counselor Goff said earlier.
Right.
You can send an email to planning@kenora.ca, and that is gonna get to our administrative staff in planning, that's gonna get to our consultant on the project, and that's the best way forward. And so honestly, I would encourage all the people that support your issue to put it in there, and it'll be considered, you know, when council, when it comes before council, so.
Oh, that's great. That's good information. Well, thank you so much for your patience today, then listening to my diatribe here, but I appreciate it, and I would send that presentation in as well. Email it in to them. Right. Great. Thank you so much. Okay, have a good rest of the day.
I just, I'm just wondering, can you ensure that, is WPS your consultant?
WSP, yes.
WSP. Will you, can you be sure to tell them about this deputation, the number of people we're representing, and our wish to have the restricted zones remain in place?
We'll certainly make sure, but it is important that you make sure that you get enough feedback yourself as well. But I will make sure that we have a conversation.
I personally have done that.
Perfect.
But I can't control everyone else to do that, but they put, send their information to us. So I'm just trying to figure out how to actually get that all in there, because a lot of people may not be here when you're having other consultation meetings.
Sure. Like I said, I'll make sure that I have a conversation with WSP directly on this, and I mean, the individual in charge of planning is in this meeting right now as well.
Right.
And the only other thing that I would like to say, you know, there's legislative requirements for us to engage the public, so we have met all of those, but I'm hearing from you, still some concerns, so.
Yes.
Am I hearing a direct mailer would be, in your opinion, the best way to reach people?
Yes. Yes, a direct mailer, which would mean you would get the snowbirds for full-time residents, and you would get the seasonal residents that have, we don't have this outside Kenora. So, and those people don't, don't get the Kenora miner, which I know that's where you published it, they maybe aren't online, and the only case online, maybe it was on your Facebook page. It wasn't in the Kenora online. So it is a lot of people that are getting missed if these things happen in the, you know, off-season or in the winter.
Unfortunately, Susan, there's a lot of us full-time residents who aren't getting the information, right? It's not, no. But, yeah, those are, those are my, you're right.
City do it, the city do it's best to make sure that everybody's connected.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your deputation.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item one, Corporate and Corporate Service Finance, June 22 financial statements. Charlotte, I guess this is you?
This is me. So we're halfway through the year. All right. So we're looking at, you know, the stable expenses revenue should be 50%, but of course, not a lot of what we do is, is one to market the same. I would like to bring to your attention a few things in the June statements. The recycling facility contracted services are under budget, and if you recall, when we were talking about the recycling change, and we're talking about being able to use cascade for the materials that we would like to sell, right now, we're getting $85 a ton as opposed to $25 historically, so for now, happy to be where we are, but of course, market changes will change this, but for now, we're getting a lot more money back than we have in the past according to cash, so that's one thing that will stay stable, relatively speaking. Sewer and water, the user fees, we have 55.2 remaining in the budget, however, we've done our year-end accrual entries in reversal, we have a little less than 50% collected, however, at year-end, we do improve that December billing, so we're in a good spot here with 55% less. Solid waste, user revenues, the garbage collection revenues are way over budget, because I think there was a rush to buy bag tanks before they increased in value, and so we had good sales in mid-June. Transfer station revenues appear to be under budget, however, the budget does take into account the increase of revenue, so we're expecting to recover a lot more revenue in the second half of the year with the higher, the higher tipping fees. And then just, I added a bit of a section here, and Marco will probably be the first one to tell you that that number will be changing weekly, but here are the flood-related expenses to the date that I prepared this report, which was July 21st, sorry, yeah. These are the expenses that relate to flooding in which we are, will, are working on finding those. But for now, we do have a considerable amount of roads expense, and we've set aside specific GL account numbers to collect this information separately, so that comes time to report there easily found.
Marco, would you be able to estimate roughly what's outstanding in those outstanding invoices?
I'd say there's at least two large invoices, like copper roads, S E road, that are probably not included in this, from what I can tell. I'd say we're probably closer to $600,000 or $700,000 output for the expenditures for roads to date.
Okay, thanks, Marco.
Thank you. That would be it. I just wanted to, if there are any other questions, I think we have to answer them.
Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, just a short comment. When you referenced the cardboard, I was quite surprised to see that, because it went to...
It did, and this was something I asked him, he said, "We are getting better prices right now, but that's not guaranteed."
No.
Right? And it...
Nothing's guaranteed.
Nothing's guaranteed, and it may not stay, but for now, that's the reason that contracted services are...
All right, anything else? Okay, on to section 357.
Okay. We report a couple times a year on section 357ths, which are write-off of property taxes due to specific reasons, and in this case, we are requesting a write-off of $8,464.85. Three reasons for this write-off, one is a fire, one is a demolition, and another is a classification change, so for these three reasons, we have reduction in taxes.
Questions or comments? All right, moving on.
Okay. The third report is just a budget amendment. We would like to appropriate $100,000 from our insurance deductible reserve to use towards the deductible for flood-related expenses through Westland Insurance. Part of our funding requirements is that we see whatever expenses can be covered by insurance. A lot of them aren't, but we have to sort this through, and we are initiating an insurance claim on some of these expenses.
And so just to be clear, as a precondition to applying for the disaster relief provincial funding, we need to go through our insurance first? So that's a precondition of the eligibility criteria in the disaster relief funding, so that's important.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Charlotte. Now we're moving to Heather, as Director of Corporate Services, working committee's report.
So this report is a follow-up to the engagement that took place in May, considering the two committees that was recommended by administration to not come forward as part of the recruitment in the fall for the Kenora Urban Recreation and Trails Committee, as well as the Heritage Kenora Committee. So council directed administration to take this back to both of the committees for input, and the feedback was that the Kenora Urban Recreation Trails Committee could look at a different process, and that their work would continue, but directly through administration, and the Heritage Committee felt that they wanted to continue their work. So now it is up to council which committee they want to move forward with. The rest of them will still move forward that we discussed previously.
Questions, comments? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I'll talk about the Trails Committee, and I agree with the direction moving forward. The committee has been fairly inactive over the past couple of years, and I think that having a full-time committee at this point is, is not necessary, but I do agree with figuring out some kind of mechanism to keep the trails initiative first and foremost. There's been tremendous work done on our, on our trails through the last few years, a Rotary Trail, a McBey Trail, you know, all of the trails have been enhanced greatly, and that work has been noted by the community and appreciated, and we need to keep that good work happening. But two, two things I want to point out is that goal number three in our strategic plan is the recreation, the recreation goals, and I just pulled that up because my memory's not good, so I just want to make sure. For our focus area three in our new strategic plan talks about community recreation, well-being, and safety, and one of the objectives, or two of the objectives in that is, or what we heard from the community was providing alternate modes of transportation and expanding of our trails, and continuing to invest in our parks and our trails. So we do know that those trail systems are important to the community and the public, and they do want more and new trails. So I don't think we should lose sight of that, because it is, does sit in our strategic plan, and I think we have to keep looking at it. And the one thing that I heard from the consultants that stood out for me when we had the first iteration of the Parks and Recreation Plan was that there was no connectivity between our trails, but the Trails Committee actually does have a plan that connects all of our trails through one master trail. It was called the Lake of the Woods Trail. So I'm just hoping that that good work is not lost. Some things have not been completed. It is still a goal and objective in our strategic plan. It's important to the community, so to find a mechanism to work with the community in whatever way and keep that trail system moving forward without a committee, and if we have to go back to a committee, that we can continue looking at how important the trails are in our community and not lose sight of that. So those are my only comments about that committee.
Stace, would you like to just provide an update on the Parks and Rec Master Plan?
Yeah, so we're going through the final stages of the Master Rec and Park Plan. That is touched on. The, after completing the strat plan, the next step of that is to develop the operational plans, which will link back into each of those goals and objectives that, you know, some of which you spoke to, so, you know, through those processes, that's how you don't lose sight of things that are sort of guiding.
And that, that's my only point, is just don't lose sight of the fact that there's still work to be done, and how that work gets done is gonna be important. Thanks, Stace.
Counselor Enola.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to see this Heritage Committee continue on. It's made some big improvements around town, and let's remember, we increased the funding to what we thought was pretty important, to extend this funding for the Heritage Committee, so I think nothing's changed there. They've got a good group of volunteers, they spend a lot of time on this, and they, I've been to a number of their meetings, and I think it should continue and be good for the city.
Just for clarification, the Heritage Committee does not have a budget. That money goes to the CIP, so let's just keep that, those facts clear.
All right, anything further? I might note that sitting in this chair with Mayor Rehner sitting to my left makes me feel like I'm sitting in my father's chair at dinner. I'm a little nervous. All right, no further questions on that? Then we'll move to Engineering and Infrastructure, second quarter report. You're up, Marco.
Okay, starting with engineering projects, sewer and water rehabilitation started in the spring. Second Street South was the first project that hit the ground here, and as of the end of June, the seventh quarter, we're about 60% complete with that. One of the nice things about that project is we were able to get, secure $1.3 million worth of ice and refunding, green funding, to put towards the water name distribution system upgrades as part of that project. The project itself is, I think, about two weeks behind schedule at this point. There was a delay at the start of the project in terms of the contractor procuring materials for the project. Other locations within that project coming up will be Second Avenue South and Seventh Avenue South and Lakeside. The municipal paving project, it had an extra location of work added to it, being First Avenue South by Frost and Foods, which took about a week or so out of the original schedule, out of that proposed, original schedule for the original scopes of work. As of the end of second quarter here, First Avenue was obviously completed, and... and the repaving and sidewalk work on Highway 17 East on Sunset Strip was about 50% complete. An upcoming project that engineering will be looking at is the Railway Street Phase Three, which is related to the design and utility pole relocations for that specific project. We have engaged WSP Consulting to assist the city in looking at any improvements we can try and fit into that railway street project at the 16th Avenue Railroad Crossing. So the project coming up for the Phase Three is basically limited to the completion of that design and getting the pole line relocated as the second stage of the utility relocates going up towards the 16th Avenue Crossing in 20, starting in 2023. Storm Sewer Capital Project was originally slated for the color replacements at Gull Road, and unfortunately, the tender came in way over budget and was canceled due to the high water levels we received in the spring. So we're now reevaluating other locations to use that funding and get those tenders up later this year for fall implementation. One of the emergency projects that came up fairly quickly in May was the failure of Storm Sewer next to Pro Auto Blast, which failed quite quickly, and we used some of that capital Storm Sewer money for that specific project, so we do have to wait to reserves. It's quite a detailed project, I'd say, with trench boxes and whatnot with their building being so close to that pipe. And we were lucky enough to secure a contractor in Apple Valley to get that repaired before more damage was done to the property under the storm system. Line painting, as of the end of June, was approximately 75% complete, and it was a bit of a later start with the late spring. And the last bit of work that will continue on later on is the second school crosswalk painting to occur just before school starts in September. Pine Corn Drive failure area, we were able to get Stan Tech Consulting in there to do some test drilling in June, and they have since provided a preliminary geotechnical report. And we're looking at a further report on that. They had based some assumptions on their initial report that we want to further investigate to make a better decision going forward. And we're going to be doing some test pitting at the bottom of that slope in the Enjering Swamp. Hopefully, this week for further clarifications and further information to make a decision on that one. Canora Area Landfill, the perimeter road project started last year and was unable to be completed with a later September start last year with the onset of a quicker winter than the wanted to in the fall. So at this point in time, we're looking at some cleanup works hopefully be done this summer in terms of hydroseeding, some ditch check downs, and some service material to the finished grappling and road for that project. The bridge inspection, the Biennial Bridge Inspection Project also kicked off this year. It's done every second year in terms of meeting bridge regulations for bridge inspections. So it has a complement of 21 bridges to be inspected, including the park gate and transfer facility tipping for structures. In June, that kicked off with the consultant being Stan Tech out of Winnipeg, which they've done six out of the 21 bridges. And those bridges were more complex bridges where they were using specialized equipment to get underneath them for those specific inspections. And basically, we put a moratorium on any kind of bridge inspections basically through the highway here, and then back in September to finish the project off with the intention of getting a report by end of year on the specifics and conditions of the bridges. We did put some side of money this year, funding for miscellaneous bridge maintenance. We've had basically all of our major bridges pressure washed and cleaned to date, and along with the associated waterproofing. And we're expecting contractor to show up later this summer to finish off some of the balaces and some concrete works and whatnot. One area of concern in regards to the project is the Vegas Road Timber Bridge, which has been scheduled to have its wing deck replaced as of last year, which didn't get done, and again, this year, which the issue is is getting the specialized timber lined up in terms of redecking that specific bridge. The contractor has made several attempts to get this specialized lumber built because it's not a common thickness. It's having a great difficulty because it's such a small bridge, it's such a small quantity to get. It's basically rough, two-inch-thick lumber, which most companies just are not interested in doing such a small quantity. So we're still trying to source that wood and potentially come up with other alternatives going forward. Environmental Services, specifically solid waste. There's been a total of 7,270 tons of material received for solid waste, excuse me, which comprises of 6,910 tons of waste and 360 tons of recycled material that's been diverted from landfill and sent off to recycling purposes to Winnipeg. Fleet. We've had some interesting things come up in fleet, specifically in relation to the sweeper replacement. This year's capital budget fleet had a replacement of a sweeper. And the manager has done quite a bit of homework on options to replace the sweeper, and he's come up with a cost-effective option, which is about half the cost of a conventional sweeper in which an attachment is put on to a front-end loader which acts as the sweeper. So we'll be getting some extra use out of our loaders at a reduced cost compared to what we would have purchased and spent in addition to if we would have put up an order in for a specific dedicated sweeper, probably wouldn't have shown up this year with the backlog to various production lines. So that was a whole list to the department in getting that extra sweeper, you know, well ahead of time of what would have been if we would have gone a conventional purchasing route. Some of the smaller pieces of fleet will be coming in shortly. There's a new crew cab that's, I guess, on the assembly line as we speak, which is a good thing. There have been certain pieces of equipment that just haven't shown up due to COVID-related backlogs and whatnot. So hopefully, going forward, some of the equipment purchases will kind of get back to normal in terms of getting production lines up and running as they once did prior to COVID. In the spring, we did receive and purchase three electronic digital message boards, which we have used quite readily and have become very useful over the last few months with the flooding events and various construction and digs that we've done to date. That's one big boon, I think, to the overall operations department through getting messages out in terms of those electronic message boards, which has really assisted basically the roads and sewer water departments for the most part. Basically, in the spring, there was putting a lot of equipment, seasonal equipment, into service in terms of the sweepers. We did have some breakdowns of those sweepers, which slowed down some of the street sweeping in the spring through major first round cleanups. But then again, that was aided with the purchase of the loader-based sweeper unit that came in in June. Again, seasonal stuff has been put into service in terms of the boats, the tractors, the trimmers, and so on. Fleet also participated in the student rodeo, getting the students up and running in the spring in regards to field training, vehicle inspections, and so on. Our work order software system was upgraded to a fog-based system, providing a little bit more flexibility in the department tracking the work orders. We did have a meeting, I guess, back in the spring in regards to potholes and patching, and the fleet had come up with an idea that we had an old bi- proprietary packer that gets mounted on to a rubber tire loader, which has been put back into service, which was sitting in the back room there for quite some time, seemed to have helped pothole patching in terms of action for those types of patches. One of the highlights is the manager did go to Barry, Ontario, for a trade show in which he looked at an asphalt recycling unit, which takes old asphalt, reheats it up, adds a little bit of oil to it, and is an alternative to using coal next to hot mix patching, which is something that I think the department will maybe look at going forward to see if that makes sense for the city to have such a piece of equipment to assist in pothole patching. Moving on to roads, I guess, most of the springs we all know was related to a lot of the flooding incidences north of the bypass and subsequently the south end of the city. So several projects that the city staff took on related to the flooding were School Road, Coker Road at Bailey Bridge. There was a washout on the Rapid Lake Walking Trail that they attended to for parks. They assisted in the grappling and whatnot of the Essex Road rail trail. That water was seeping from the flood. There were some repairs done at Golf Course Road. Granular aid repairs to the Carlton Road. And then there was hired contractors that were also secured for some of the flooding repairs and grade raises related to a couple of sections on East Mellett Road, one being at Essex Road and one about 500 meters north of the Port Sheik Bridge, which were raised. In addition, Anderson Branch Road and Carlton Road and Sedeski Road were also all lifted at their various goal points. And the final grade raise, and the most major one completed today, is the Coker Road. Excuse me, just beside the Kelly Road. In addition, contractors also replaced the Brolender Culverts on Deep Frain Island that had washed out and made the Brolender into a single main road for several days there. Day-to-day activities in the department were obviously pothole repairs, trying to keep up with the potholes. If it's a storm, sewer flushing and cleaning. Majority of the time was also spent on street sweeping and sidewalk sweeping earlier in the spring to get first round of litter sand cleaned up. Various sidewalk repairs also started in the spring with our internal concrete crews working through the roads department. Shore brushing and grass mowing commenced, along with assisting the sewer and water department with equipment and operators for various digs that they were encountered. In addition, dust suppressants in terms of calcium was put on, was started on various roads north of the bypass for dust suppression. Grading roads occurred as it could between dry periods as the rains have kind of hampered some of that grading on some of those roads north of the bypass to date. In addition, you know, providing cemetery with their assistance in digging and whatnot graves. One of the capital projects that they did have slated and budgeted for 2022 is the East Mellett Road just north of the Essex Road, which was actually completed as contractors under the flood relief work that they've done to date. Moving on to sewer and water, a lot of their activities to date have been pretty routine in terms of water digs and whatnot. I guess some of the highlights for that would have been turning on the seasonal water services to Coney Island, Kuwait West End Summer Service, and Initiative Services. And quite a lot of time was spent doing locates as a lot of contractors and work really start up in the spring for a lot of the major projects on the order given time. I guess a couple of the main highlights that the Sewer Water Division incurred here or forced or came up against was the major force main break at the North Hamilton Pumping Station, which happened over a weekend. Took about three days to fix, just based on the depth of the force main, the amount of water, rain that occurred over the weekend. Took the whole crew, the whole weekend to actually repair that force main, which is, you know, above and beyond what you normally encounter in these types of situations and repairs. And another, I guess, notable dig that they did was Rapid Lake Road force main that had failed and took quite some time to get down to the repair itself with Rapid Lake Road water being so high and that excavation occurring right next to the lake. And a nice big boulder came out of the excavation, which you can see in one of the pictures at the end of the report there, so. Other than that, I think that kind of sums up the second quarter operations.
Questions or comments, Counsel?
Yeah, Marco, excuse me. A lot of these road projects are being completed here now. Is the line painting contractor going to come back and finish this off, or?
Depending on where the location is, like Highway 17, we knew that those certain roads would be under construction, so those were deleted from the annual line painting tender and then put into the contractor doing the work. So they will secure either Northwest Lines or Right Way or some other contractor to complete the works after repaving is done.
Excellent. Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, Marco, I think it's a very positive report, especially considering the flooding and the water factors. Staff continue to do the regular work that's expected in addressing the number of crises that have occurred. So in a lot of cases, this is information the public should see and what the work is done and accomplished under these circumstances.
I appreciate it. Yeah, it has been a challenging year, based on the flooding incidences and even just the weather and snow that we had in general that have really, you know, taken a toll on our roads, as we've all seen. Potholes just seem to be reoccurring on a continuous basis, which, you know, isn't the norm for the city. And, you know, with the weather and the continuous rain, I don't know if it was ever really dried out to any great extent. So it has been a challenging year, and I think, you know, roads crews have stepped up and done their part as best they can with the resources we have.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I echo Counselor McMillan's comments about, it's a really good report, and it shows how much work staff have done, and it has been extremely challenging. And it's good for the community to see the work that's being done, that staff are doing. But the one thing I want to mention is potholes. Infrastructure is our number-one goal in our STRAT Plan. The community has been very clear about, you know, the roads that travel on the sidewalks they walk on. That's the stuff that's tangible and important to them, and so that work is going to be important. I just want to talk a little bit about potholes, because that's what everybody talks about, is potholes. And that work that you did done by the Frosty Foods Corner this year was excellent and badly needed. I'm hoping that in the future and for upcoming budgets, that we can take a look at those sections of road in the community that keep popping up every year, are problematic, and let's just do the right thing, which is what you did at Frosty Foods, dig it up, repave it, so that we're not going back every year and having to patch and repair them, and the community is inconvenienced because some of the stuff that was... the community is inconvenienced, because some of the stuff that was going on was pretty bad. So I think if we just do that investment right up in the front end and, you know, grab a couple of really bad sections, and we can all, we all know what those sections are, like Icy Fifth Avenue, I think it is, or Fifth Street.
Fifth Street.
That's a bad one. Get it in the budget, let's do it right, and not keep going back year over year. It just makes people mad, having to bang along on those potholes and take their cars and grab and get fixed. So I just, I just put that out for consideration, because I think that's the way forward. Thanks, Marco.
Any other questions? And I'd like to reference those comments as well. I've lived on the current road for 47 years, and I know it's been a very tough year, because people seem to forget that when the rain began, there was still eight to 10 inches of snow, and everything was still frozen underneath it, so I think in time, there's going to need to be some serious rebuilding and probably using that new Mulcher attachment or the almost new Mulcher attachment on the front of the graders that really seem to rebuild the road. So it's going to take a while for everything to come back. I understand that, I understand it very well, because as I said, having been there for 47 years, you can almost tell when the graders are due to come, because things start to dry up, but it has yet to happen this year. It's been a very tough year, so thank you for a very fulsome report, much appreciated. Moving on to community and community services, second quarter report, Stace, you're up.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think these reports are great, because it really illustrates to council how we execute on both our capital and our operating plans. So before we get going, I want to thank staff for a hard effort in the last quarter, and it's a lot of work to put these reports together, so again, thanking staff for their efforts there. I'll just go through the, some of the more notable things that we've done this year. We did a major cleanup of the Discovery Center. Since I've been here, that hasn't been done, so we got a boom lift and got, you know, in there, underneath these, and cleaned up the whole building. Work continues on the Central Community Club. Actually, these photos are a week old or something like that, so you'll note now that the ringed surface area has all been backed up in rubble, so that's good, and waiting for it to dry out, so that we can do the core at the Community Club itself. We started to do some prep work for the work that's going to be taking place at the Cloud Park. We completed the fiberglass repairs and painting of Husky the Muskie. The Coney Island Boardwalk Project, which was part of our capital plan this year, you can see how the boardwalk has been improved, we've done accessibility improvements there, we've done privacy improvements there, we've had to pause the work right now, because the water's too high, so there's actually some lifts of lumber there to complete the project, but we've made really good progress there despite the high water. The White Cap Pavilion has gone through a major clean, and I don't know if you've seen it, but the change from last year to this year is absolutely amazing, again, done by third-party consultants. We also did some refurbishment of the boardwalk, which is something that we do on an annual basis with the shifting that goes on with those boards to eliminate the trip hazards. We implemented the disc golf course at Garrel Park, and just for everyone's benefit, this is a, a park whereby people will go and use their own frisbees, it's, there's no staff there or anything like that, it's just an amenity for people in the community to use and people coming in as tourists who are really into disc golf, they all have their own discs, and they just go to various locations, and so very happy to get that done. We've installed new fencing at the museum and art center, we had the standard chain fence there, it was getting damaged on a regular basis, and we were, were able to, the air conditioners damaged, being done to those, so we installed some new decorative fencing in those two locations. We've also done LED upgrades in the museum and new dividers in the washrooms. We have, and I got to commend staff, there's been a lot of dock damage as well, related to the high water and the way the flood took place and, or has taken place and also wind. So there's some pictures of the Coney Island Footbridge, we have engaged ANTEC to do an engineering study on that, and that report is, it came in actually late last week, we had docks breaking up in the Nishin Abbey Park. As Marco mentioned earlier, we had a flooding issue on Rotary Trail, which with the support of the roads team, we put in a cover there to divert some of the water, and there's been a lot of dock closures, I think Sean had told me, we've got something like 50 barrels out in various locations, just to try to keep everything down, because the docks wanted to flood, or to, sorry, to lift because of the flooding, and a number of other smaller projects in the facilities and parks area. Moving to Josh's area, we had the launch of the new Destination Tourism website, which we're very excited about, so if people haven't gone, go to www.fishtenor.ca. We have done a number of joint ventures, the Soon Arrows Nestor Falls, including the launch of a new Fall in Love with Lake of the Woods video, which highlights a lot of the natural beauty elements that we have here in Kenora and surrounding area. We've also done a number of marketing campaigns with Soon Arrows Nestor Falls, Destination Ontario, Destination Northern Ontario. The benefit of those is they, we are able to lever not only dollars from these other organizations, but also expertise and really define target marketing, where we're going into different markets to try to attract tourism. There's a list of the various campaigns, when they ran, what our investment was and what the goal was in those campaigns, but they've been very successful of late, and you'll note one Pan Northern US campaign has a total budget of $520,000, where our investment was only $5,000. So it gives some great visibility to us at a low cost. It is important to note, too, that when we're doing our marketing campaigns, that we're really using social media to leverage and spread the word, we find that to be very, very cost-effective, and really that's what, when we did our tourism study, that's where people are going to get information, so we're leveraging those channels to get more traffic. A lot of these things are really good news stories coming out of COVID as well, where Mattioski's Farmers Market, we're back to our previous numbers, where we're seeing upwards of 100 vendors on any given Wednesday, and we're seeing people come back in droves and exceeding the 2,000 visitor number, which is great. We have full slate of activities for Canada Day, and as mentioned by the mayor last meeting, you know, staff have done a great job in terms of staffing these things and making sure that there's been a very good experience for all of our visitors. In terms of the White Cap, very full slate of activities booked, and last weekend was a great weekend, and going into KBI this weekend, there's going to be a lot of activity down at the White Cap. Moving to the rec center, it's very interesting to look at how we're rebounding out of COVID. And I ask that you draw your eyes to the first three tables there, that look at data that is year-end data for 2021, relative to year-to-date data, January through June, so you can see how we're progressing, and we're going to, you know, of course, 2021 was very thin on numbers due to COVID and things like that, but you can see how we're rebounding. So that's getting people in the community, getting people into our facilities, getting people active and vibrant, so that's really great. So that speaks to the rec center, rentals of the rinks, and also membership packages at the fitness center. A number of special events that have taken place that have come back, which are great. And then in closing, just a number of projects that have taken place, either at the rec center or at the Kuwait Memorial Arena, that we're very happy about, so that is our quarter review, second quarter review.
Commissioner Miller?
Thanks, Stace. I share similar comments with the Marco's report, just great information here and there. And just a small example, being at the Farmers Market, I think, last Wednesday, which was Chris and me hanging on bag, handing, handing on bags, I couldn't use a number of people that were just flooded, and it was just amazing. Amidst all the chaos, there's a lot of positives, so thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, and I was also handing out bags down the Harborfront, and I was really surprised at the number of people down for the Farmers Market, and the work that Josh and his crew are doing, I know that you guys are short-staffed, I really appreciate the effort that you're putting in there, and everybody seemed happy down there, so it was a good opportunity to talk to people. What, just one comment, and I noted your comments about cleaning up the Discovery Center, and cleaning up underneath the White Cap, and, you know, we live with that stuff so long, we never know how shabby it is until we actually do some, some work on it, right? So having said that, I was out on the lake on the weekend, I guess, and I drove by the troublesome fish and took a picture, and posted it, and the comments that I got were, "That base that it's resting on with the lattice is shabby." So I'm just putting a bug in your ear to have a look at the base of that muskie, and if we can make that appear a little bit more updated.
I'll have to have a look.
Thank you, and you don't notice it, except if you're on the water, right? And those were the comments that came back to me, so, it's like I say, you never know until you look, so, yeah, have a look, Stace. And thank you for the report, staff for doing a good work, so thanks.
Okay, any further questions? Thanks, Stace, great report, on to the next one. Tourism and economic development strategy, one-year updates.
Yeah, we're going to begin Josh a little bit.
Hi, Lori. So it has been 12 months since council accepted the five-year economic development strategy at the July 2021 meeting, and council will recall that the strategy outlines broader goals for economic development of tourism, and then this area, which really covers like both service functions, which we call foundations. And also included in the strategy was the development of a framework for which we can allocate our municipal accommodation tax dollars. So these are the dollars that are collected by roofed accommodations in the city from visitors that go towards, specifically go towards tourism and economic development projects in the community, and so a few of the highlights that we're going to talk about today are supported by those accommodation tax dollars. And so Josh and I are very excited to share some of the highlights and progress that we've made over the last 12 months, and it's overdue to talk about tourism.
Sounds good, and I think the one thing that we, we want to tell the public, and we want to tell council, and my fellow staff members, our coworkers, is that that tax being a visitor tax and not a tax-based tax, so we've been trying to reiterate that a lot of the times in some of the key highlights that we do, it's not coming from the tax basis, it's actually coming from municipal accommodation tax. Stay still a little bit on my thunder, because a lot of the things that you have talked about a little bit, they're tied back into that tourism economic development strategy, so implementation elements of the brand and websites, we've accomplished that this year, we look to have a complete, obviously, it is complete, but we're looking at doing a marketing strategy moving forward. He spoke about the joint marketing partnerships that we have with Destination Ontario, Destination Northern Ontario, Soon Arrows Nestor Falls, these are really important to us in terms of that strategy, as it outlines a regional approach, so we have our Kenora-specific approach, but we also have the regional approach where we talk about Lake of the Woods and the importance of Lake of the Woods into some markets where it's a little bit more recognizable than Kenora, we're going to get Kenora to that stage of Lake of the Woods, and Lake of the Woods is the stage of maybe a bath or something like that is the goal. One of the things we've done in the last little bit is our partnership with Science North, so we've gone through phase one and now phase two of their expansion plans into the Discovery Center, so really good news, both are supported through council as well as the municipal accommodation tax, so they're looking at this stage here, and then phase three is the actual expansion station, hopefully we get to that in the near future here. On top of that, we've also done the installation of the Fish Exhibit, as well as the expansion of the Bolt Watering Exhibit at the Discovery Center, so making it more of a discovery center, which we've talked about numerous times since the, the building was built. Another big project that we've done is supporting Mount Evergreen and their expansion of the Four Season Business Plan, as well as the Drive-In Theater, so this is to help support some off-season business, so we did, through staff resources and financial resources, the municipal accommodation tax, so that's a pretty big partnership, recognize that Mount Evergreen is a key winter asset, it's looking expanding into the Four Season area. As well as, Stace mentioned, we had a full slate of events, the Waking White Cap fees has helped these events come back in full force, and they are very much appreciative of all the efforts that council, municipal accommodation tax is putting forward to make these events go again. Harbor Fest was super successful, Canada was super successful, we've had a bunch of events down there. We went to the Coney Island Shuttle in 2021, we had, in the inaugural season, there was 540 riders, we are asking the, we brought it back for 2022, we're asking the Green Adventures, who operate the Coney Island Shuttle for 2022, to keep track of stats, but also as a recommendation of council, to find where those people are coming from. So we'll have a comparable at the end of the season here, to see how we're progressing with that Coney Island Shuttle. We also replaced the morning walls at Harborfront, so those aren't new, they were starting to move around, they were getting a little old, I think they were installed well before I started with the city. As well as, when we look at the event side of things, we had the Northern Ontario Curling Playoffs, it was supposed to happen in, for two years now, but COVID has stopped for two years, but it is moving forward in the winter of 2022, 2023, so we're in the planning stages at the moment, so that's kind of a new, bigger event that is outside the realm of our, our regular events that are moving forward. And then we're also looking at reviewing the municipal policy, which we completed in 2022, just to update it a little bit in terms of some of the new things that are happening within events realms and things like that, so. With that, that kind of is a summary of the key highlights, and these are the key highlights just to report back to that tourism economic development strategy, so it's not every single thing that we do on every single day, we just wanted to provide some key highlights. So I'll hand it back to Megan here, talk about economic development.
Sure, so in terms of activating development on cars vacant and underutilized lands, we did complete disposition of three municipally-owned properties over the last 12 months, as well, we've negotiated a conditional sale on another property that will move forward over the next few years. We successfully negotiated a temporary land agreement to promote economic activity in the downtown and help to activate the Harbor Town Center, and prior to that, we had also delivered minor capital improvements on that property to, again, support temporary use and activate the downtown and the interim. We continue to work with our partners to support the growth and retention of local businesses, so one of the cases we wanted to highlight that was supported through the municipal accommodation tax was the delivery of those new street sweeping elements downtown, so the banners that have the new brand, as well as the street pole, street pole racks, which I think are completed now, and that was delivered in partnership with Harbor Town Biz and supported through the Rural Economic Development Fund. We also continue to prioritize support in terms of the COVID-19 response and relief, and so we continue to deliver at the Glad You Are Here campaign, so you mentioned handing out bags at the market last week, that is one component of that campaign, and we also continue to deliver our open streets programming, so particular, particularly, we provided support for the Main Street Market in 2021, and in 2022, the City of Kenora hosted those events, or the first event to date, as the lead organization this year. Moving on to foundations, we continue to develop and invest in strategic infrastructure to support tourism and economic growth, so one of the projects we've worked on in this area is the development of the new public washroom facility that will be located in the Harbor Town Center, and we are positioned to have that new facility be delivered and installed this fall. We've also worked to facilitate housing development in the community, so one of the cases that was approved recently was the recommended amendments to the Municipal Capital Facilities Bylaw, so that allows us to have improved flexibility in the delivery of that policy. And we were also pleased to support two residential conversion projects through the Community Improvement Plan this year. And then the last piece in this area that we wanted to speak about was the implementation and the recommendations of the Harborfront Business Development Plan, so we were successful in receiving funding from three programs from senior levels of government to undertake the detailed design work, and we received $670,000 towards that project, and we also received 90% of total costs, so approximately $850,000 in external funding from FEDOR and NOHLC, which will go towards capital work and the implementation of the phase one, or sorry, phase one work at the Cloud Park, and then of course, the work that was undertaken at Husky the Muskie and completed in June of this year.
Any questions or comments, council?
Just shared the same comment, and Megan and Josh, I think you got the makings here for your part. And Megan and Josh, I think you got the Megan's here for your podcast. To get this information over here. It's good information.
We got one coming on mat tax.
Yeah, this is really good information with the mat because I don't think the community understands the mat tax and how it works. And it talks about budgeting and it's really hard for the community to grasp budgeting and revenue streams and how projects get funded. I mean, when we look at the project and the work that, the work that we've been doing in the last four years for sure, there probably hasn't been a park, a trail, a recreation center, a beach that has not had significant work done to it and improvements. And the way we're funding this is through the mat tax. So I'm hoping through communication that we can get something out onto Facebook to explain, you know, this is how we're funding these projects. Tourism and economic development project funding is really hard for the community because they don't understand it. It's like I said, they, they're worried about the roads they travel on, their infrastructure. So the more we can communicate with them and get the message out there that this is how this work gets done, it's through getting grants, the hard work of staff getting grants from the feds, from the province. This municipal accommodation tax as a revenue stream. So I think the more we can get that message out to the public and the good work that staff have been doing, I think is really important. I've asked Charlotte to, with the financial statements now, to always include the mat tax and compare it back to the previous year's budget, the revenues, expenditures and variances. That's going to give us a really good look at how that revenue is flowing through the system. So I hope in the future that we can do that, but thanks for your good work, folks.
If I could just pick up on that. So the plan is at the end of the year, so either December or January, we're going to be coming back to council and giving a full year, one-year review of the projects that were budgeted for, what was accomplished and what we're planning going forward as well.
Thanks, Stace.
Any further questions, comments? Next, Stace, and thanks Megan and Josh, great report. Next meeting, the next committee, the whole meeting will be Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. And now I'd like to see, do we have a motion to adjourn to a closed meeting?
I have, please, let me put it in time. Moved by myself, second by Counsel Corey, that this meeting now be adjourned to a closed session at 10:11 a.m. And further, the pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 is amended. Authorization is hereby given for committee. Move into a closed session to discuss items pertaining to the following. One, disposition of land three matters. Two, educating and training members of council, one matter.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, pardon me. In favor? And not opposed.